To the network. I know because we changed the password. I think we just checked it. It's committed to my Wi-Fi.
I know.
I want to see. Oh, one of them worked. Let's see. I didn't think about that. Now I don't know which one to use with. This one looks best to that one. What's the keyboard answer? Well, maybe it's because our city council network is down. Why is it? Huh?
Good evening, groups. How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Fine. You look like you're filled with joy.
I'm filled with troubles right now.
How's Molly? Hey, you did it. You're all right. Hold down both of the gloves.
Can't get either. Can't get either one connected. I'll take really good notes. And I didn't bring any paper. Yeah. I probably will, I guess. It only spends about taking minutes by paper. I'll keep trying. Yeah, my phone's connected too.
It's five o'clock. It is five o'clock, and we like to start on time. I'd like to call this May 20th, 2019, City Council Session Order. Our first item of business is Pastor Zach Strong of the Christ Church of the Heartland will lead us in our invocation. Thank you, Zach.
Good evening, everybody. Could we pray? Father, we just want to say thank you, God, for your goodness and grace. We want to thank you for our great city, our community. Father, I want to thank you for our mayor and our leaders, and we bless them this evening, Father, to govern, to guide, and to guard our city. Father, so that our city is prosperous, that our city is whole, that our citizens walk, Father, in peace and live in joy. Father, we declare blessing over this community. God, we declare that it's teeming with life in every area. God, that it be a shining beacon and light to all the communities around. So, Father, we give you thanks. We give you honor for your goodness and your peace and joy and your prosperity that is resting upon our community in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Please draw me the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all.
Thank you. Welcome to our study session. We have three presentations this evening. The first two are proclamations, and I'm going to come over here and head in front and take care of that first. First is Public Works Week. Hey. I didn't think you'd come up here by yourself.
No, no, I don't do it by myself.
Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, whereas the support of and understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, highways, public highways, public buildings, solid waste collection, and whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community directly depend on these facilities and services, whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, whether it's our planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to 25th, 2019, as Public Works Week in the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, and I call upon all citizens and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, quality of life. Thank you, Mayor. I might say is, people are just not aware it's a river's been up above flood states for a long time, and it doesn't look like to be going down anytime soon. It's going down very slowly. You all have really been stalwarts and all that effort, what goes on mangling pump stations and watching the wall and everything else you have to do. Bye.
Busy time.
Busy time. Thank you.
Six miles right here, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks. Now, I have another proclamation for Gun Violence Awareness Day, and I thank people from Moms Demand Action for Gunsense in America and SNAP are here if they want to come forward. Can't miss them in those bright red shirts. Should've wore red tonight. Had a red coat, I should've worn it. Whereas gun violence affects every city across the United States, and whereas gun violence kills more than 90 Americans a day and injures hundreds more, and whereas protecting public safety in our community is one of Cape Girardeau's public officials' highest responsibilities, and whereas the City of Cape Girardeau is committed to reducing gun violence and keeping our citizens safe, and whereas through partnership and collaboration between the community and local agencies, we can increase public awareness, address gun violence issues, and focus on ways to reduce crime and improve quality of life, and whereas the City of Cape Girardeau supports responsible gun ownership, stands with Americans across the country for national gun violence awareness, whereas June 7th, 2019, marks the fifth annual National Gun Violence Awareness Day, citizens are encouraged to wear orange on June 8th to raise awareness about gun violence and honor lives of gun violence victims and survivors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Bob Fox, Mayor of the City of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, do hereby proclaim June 7th, 2019, as Gun Violence Awareness Day in the City of Cape Girardeau, and I call upon all citizens to support Cape Girardeau's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. I have one for Chris Root. And one for Sean.
Six miles right this way, please.
Here, Colette.
Or not. Wait, is he in there?
Always room for one more.
There's always room for one more. All right, good job, everyone. Thank you.
And, uh...
Yes. Yes. Let's hold up about the march.
On June 8th, we have the prayer walk, fourth and the prayer walk beginning at 8:30 and walk beginning at 9:00 a.m., 2.7 miles from wherever the birds, uh, birds almost got down. And starting in and in at ready button. That's all the kids from there. See the camera?
Now, I think we have a presentation about the state of our health, the Healthy Communities Coalition.
Good evening. I'm Jane Wurtsman. I'm Director at the Cape Girardeau County Public Health Center, and I came tonight and thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor and council members, for being able to share this information with you. Every three to five years, the Health Center is required to conduct a community health assessment, a little bit different than a needs assessment in that we look at a lot of different indicators, a lot of different factors as they pertain to health. The PowerPoint presentation I put together is only a piece of our overall action, so I did provide you with a handout that's condensed, and I'm probably even going to fast-forward through some of these slides because it can get a little detailed. So with that in mind, okay, I nickel that. To start things off, we partnered with St. Francis Medical Center and Southeast Health, who also are required to complete community needs and community health assessments. The three of us partnered together and held focus groups across the county, since we are countywide, but that includes also all citizens within the city. And in addition to those focus groups, we pour over a ton of data, primary data that we collect in-house, other community agencies collect, as well as secondary data from sources such as Missouri Department of Health, Centers for Disease Control, et cetera, et cetera. All of that combined together helps us identify what some of the leading public health issues are in our community and in our county. In addition, then, the focus groups provide us with a citizen input as to some of the areas that they feel are most pertinent or that they're concerned about most. We narrowed it down to 13 different indicators that we combined and compiled into our overall community health assessment. Those are listed there and on your handout. So just very quickly, some of those are demographics, which include population. When we collected the data or when we pulled the data from the websites, the most recent population for the county was at 78,161, which was in July 2017. Since that time, updated July 2018, the county is at a population of 78,753. We continue to grow, probably at a larger percent increase than the rest of the state. Our overall population breakdown, percentage by race, and then percentage as a comparison between Cape Girardeau County and the state of Missouri by male, female. There's more females percentage-wise than males in the county. And our age group with the highest percent of a population is that 45 to 64-year-old age group. Socioeconomic indicators, we have a slightly higher rate than the state when it comes to unemployment. State is at 3.4, the county is at 3.7. And another disclaimer that I have to mention is that one of the frustrating things with data is it's only good as its most recent posting, and sometimes you just cannot get up-to-date data on a lot of factors. Populations, specific populations considered to be in poverty, we have a 20.5% of children between the 0 to 17 years of age in poverty compared to 8.1% of seniors in poverty. Both of those are lower than the average state rates. So I mentioned the focus groups. When combined with the data that we presented to them, which I've kind of gone over briefly with you, and getting their input, these are the top 10 health priority issues that were identified from that focus group. Mental health, substance abuse, access to health care, overweight or obesity in children and adults, wellness and prevention in general, transportation, dental health, smoking, and chronic disease care.
Is it in order?
Pardon?
Is it in order?
Uh, yes, that is in order. That is in order. So I am going to fast-forward and just note to you that our leading causes of death in the county are heart disease and cancer. Those are the two leading causes. When we did our last assessment back in 2015, cancer was the leading cause of death in the county, so we have changed that a little bit. And I do apologize for running through these kind of fast, but in the interest of time and trying to get to the main points here. Told you it was kind of lengthy. Ah, here we go. We also have a higher incidence of hypertension, mortality due to stroke, and I will just also add that as a public health agency, of course, one of our concerns is communicable diseases. We have noticed, not only in the state but within our own clinical services, an increase in the amount of syphilis in the state as well as in the county. Going back to those three, those focus areas, what we had to do then with those 10 priority areas was to narrow it down to something that was a little bit more manageable. With a voting process, the group and the agency determined that the three top priority issues that we should focus on are mental health. We then did a classification called wellness and prevention, and underneath wellness and prevention, we included all of those other items that were addressed or identified through the focus group. And then our third item is access to care with transportation being one of the leading items that was identified. So when we think of public health, it's not just the public health agency, it's the overall public health system, all of our community partners, social service agencies, other healthcare providers, as well as all the individual citizens and stakeholders that go into making up a community and the county as a whole. One of the things that grew out of our last community health assessment and is still an active group is that Healthy Communities Coalition. Several partners from the county as well as the city participate in that. Parks and Rec is a member, Southeast Health, St. Francis, the university, Community Care and Counsel, now Community Partnerships, Jackson School District, Cross Trails Medical Center. So you can see a wide variety of individuals that gather once a month to address those areas and come up with a health improvement plan or strategic goals and action steps that we can take to address some of those health issues. With that said, I would like to introduce Christine Jaggers with the city Parks and Rec Department.
Sure.
So on your priority areas, was there any discussion about, I mean, just looking at them, I can see, you know, looking at mental health and smoking and substance abuse, these would all be what you might consider to be behavioral health issues. Was there any discussion about maybe tackling maybe the three of those as one issue?
I don't believe that that had been grouped that way, but that certainly is a good, good point to follow up on. I might mention that the complete health assessment, which is about 200 pages long, is on our website, and you can go there and look at that. You can also use the contact form on our website to send me thoughts like that, or if you've had a chance to take a look at that, any suggestions you might have for focus area or action steps that we might take.
Thank you.
Christine.
Hello. As she mentioned, my name's Christine Jaggers. I am the Fitness and Wellness Specialist for the City of Cape, and so what I wanted here was just some of the fun, popular events we're offering for the community and for everyone around here, you know, just to remind them how important it is to be active and enjoy it and find ways that fits them. So with the City of Cape, we offer a wide variety of community programs for all demographics. So some of them will have over 1,000 people just at one event. So we're hitting a wide variety, as I mentioned, and a lot of these are free. You know, they're free, no charge. It's out enjoying the parks, getting out there and doing whatever they can to be moving and have fun with it. So I did give you guys all, well, most of you guys, some flyers. Those are just a few examples of what we have available here. So starting, of course, with our little kids, we always have fun with those little guys. One program we just started up that's really picking up is Fit Family, and what that is is with parents and kids, they come out and just work out together and remind the parents to be good role models for the little guys. And then, of course, we had Bike to Work in School Day, which we just had, where we had over 150 kids come out from running and biking before work or before school, obviously they're going to school, and riding to school bright and early, meeting us for some fun for breakfast, and we even got to give away two free bikes to them. So that would be our fifth year now doing that. So it's getting bigger and bigger each year. And then, of course, we always hit the family as a whole, so we have tons of different stuff for them. In just two weeks, we have Global Running Day, which will get around anywhere from 200 to 300 people coming out, walking, biking, running, just enjoying the parks, and they'll come out to join us at Capitol Park, so you guys are all invited, of course. And then Front Street Park, I don't know if any of you guys had an opportunity to join us there, but we had over 500 people coming out and just reminding them how important our parks are. So getting out, planting different parks, and we even have started three different community gardens here in Cape Girardeau, so really making a big effort here. And of course, with our delts, we have tons of stuff for them, from monthly wellness seminars. The next one coming up is actually, I'm sure, we're all used to, cooking on the run, so teaching them different ways to throw healthy foods together. And then, well, Riverfront Yoga, we'd love that water to go down to make that a little bit easier for us. But as soon as it gets down, we typically get around 50 people Saturday morning coming out right in front of the river and enjoying a nice yoga workout, and then sometimes they'll head over to the Riverfront Market, so it's a great way to get the community together again. And then, of course, we're all kids at heart, so we do have our Adult Beach Bash coming up soon this summer, and that gets anywhere from 800 to 900 people coming out, and it's just for delts to come out and have fun, be active, and remember to move and have a good time. And then we love, of course, our Active Aging Groups. So next week, we do have our very first Senior Health and Fitness Day, which will have anything from yoga to the riverwalking, where we go on the lazy river, to zumba and chair yoga, so tons of stuff just for the seniors to get them moving. Another program we started a couple of years ago is Silver Sneakers, which seniors can come in to our group fitness and the gym at no charge. So typically, we have over a couple hundred people take advantage of that. And then, of course, we do have in the mornings just the riverwalking, where people go in that lazy river and enjoy that, so they'll walk with the current, against the current. Again, we get a couple hundred people that come out, you know, especially the retired ones, or if they're off for summer break, come out, enjoy the lazy river. And then, of course, we can't forget our pets, they're part of our family too, and we definitely incorporate them. So we have things from cooking, healthy cooking treats just for the puppies and the pets you got, to our doggy swim day. So that's just, again, some of the things we just wanted to highlight that we try to do to remind the community that we have these free opportunities to get them moving, to have fun, get off the couch and get off your phones, whatever it may be, and enjoy activity. And again, I did give you guys some flyers, and that's just some of the highlights. Of course, we always have Play Cape that come out too, helps remind the community what we have available for them. Thank you. Guys, do you have any questions, anything?
Thank you. Thanks, Christine. Thank you, Christine. We now get into communication reports. Council?
I'd like to remind everybody that on May 23rd, which is this coming Thursday, Cape Bible Chapel, the annual salt seniors and lawmen together memorial service for the 49 fallen officers in our area will be held. Always a good event, well-attended. I encourage, if you haven't been there, it's a very moving event. So that's Thursday, Cape Bible Chapel, it starts at 6:00 p.m.
I've got something on wow customer service. I want to, this came to my attention about Bruce Loyd, and I'll let somebody else talk about how awesome the air show was, but I had someone tell me that they had left their passport, it had fallen out of their bag, and it, and they happened to know Bruce, and they'd gotten to Chicago, and it's after hours, and they were going to be, they were going to have to miss a flight and all this, and they asked for Bruce's number. They called Bruce. Bruce went down after hours, made arrangements for the passport to be on the flight up to Chicago the next morning so this person could fly overseas. And I told the person, I said, "Well, that sounds like the definition of wow customer service." And so I just want to tell Bruce, "Thank you. That was really awesome." So.
I'm sure you're going to talk about this, Mayor, but, you know, the opportunity to come to the Citizens Academy graduation, and that was just a really nice experience. You know, they had their mock council meeting and talked about a few issues that were, have been and are currently popular items, and I thought the discussion was great, and it seemed like they had a great time with it. So I hope that that program continues because I got a lot of great feedback from the folks that I talked to, and the air show was great, too. So I'm sure someone else is going to talk about that.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Bruce and his entire staff and all the volunteers that made this weekend possible. I'm sure at times it maybe seemed like an overwhelming project, but it was, I think the transportation problems speak to the enthusiasm that everybody has for the event, obviously with it being so crowded and so popular. So, you know, just thank you for bringing the thing here. It was a very special thing. We got to watch it from our backyard, but, and I don't know if there are, how many traffic accidents there were in town, just driving down King's Highway was a challenge when they were out practicing their thing, and everybody was just, that was a little scary, but it was just really, really awesome, and I'm really glad our community does, provides those things for a lot of people who, you know, we would have to travel a far way to be able to see something like that, so.
I met people from Hannibal, Missouri, and Springfield, Missouri. It was amazing.
A lot of people.
A lot of people.
It was neat to see. Thanks. Took the words right out of my mouth. I was, again, thanks to Bruce and Katrina and the staff, the Airport Advisory Board, the, I don't know how many volunteers you had.
Tons of different volunteers.
Do you know?
300.
300 volunteers who spent a lot of hours out there doing all sorts of things, and it was a huge success, and I know there are 15,000 people about there on Saturday. I mean, that's just unbelievable, way above what we estimated, and that led to...
That's our biggest single day. I was in the sun there.
Right. Sunday forecast pushed a lot in Saturday, too, but it was a great show. I think everybody there really enjoyed the show. There were some logistical things with transportation, but that can be expected because of just the volume of people and the fact that, you know, the airport only has a certain amount of access to get in there. But all in all, even though some people weren't happy with that, they were really happy with
I've got something on wow customer service. I want to, this came to my attention about Bruce Loyd. And I'll let somebody else talk about how awesome the air show was, but I had someone tell me that they had left their passport. It had fallen out of their bag and it, and they happened to know Bruce. And they'd gotten to Chicago, and it's after hours, and they were gonna be, they were gonna have to miss a flight and all this, and they asked for Bruce's number. They called Bruce. Bruce went down after hours, made arrangements for the passport to be on the flight up to Chicago the next morning, so this person could fly overseas. And I told the person, I said, "Well, that sounds like the definition of wow customer service." And so I just want to tell Bruce, thank you. That was really awesome.
I'm sure you're gonna talk about this, Mayor, but you know, the opportunity to come to the Citizens Academy graduation. And that was just a really nice experience. You know, they had their mock council meeting and talked about a few issues that were, have been and are currently popular items. And I thought the discussion was great, and it seemed like they had a great time with it. So I hope that that program continues because I got a lot of great feedback from the folks that I talked to. And the air show was great, too. So I'm sure someone else is gonna talk about that.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank the, Bruce and his entire staff and all the volunteers that made this weekend possible. I'm sure at times it maybe seemed like an overwhelming project, but it was, I think the, the transportation problems speak to the enthusiasm that everybody has for the event, obviously with it being so crowded and so popular. So, you know, just thank you for bringing the thing here. It's, it was a very special thing. We got to watch it from our backyard, but, and I don't know if there are, how many traffic accidents there were in town. Just driving down King's Highway was a challenge when they were out practicing their thing, and everybody was just, that was a little scary. But it was just really, really awesome. And I'm really glad our community does, provides those things for, for a lot of people who, you know, we would have to travel a far way to be able to see something like that, so.
I met people from Hannibal, Missouri, and Springfield, Missouri. It was amazing.
A lot of people.
A lot of people.
Was neat to see. Thanks. Took the words right out of my mouth. I was, again, thanks to Bruce and Katrina and the staff, the Airport Advisory Board, the, I don't know how many volunteers you had.
Tons of different volunteers.
Do you know? 300 volunteers who spent a lot of hours out there doing all sorts of things. And it, it was a huge success. And I know there, you know, 15,000 people about there on Saturday. I mean, that's just unbelievable, way above what we estimated. And that led to... Sunday Forecast pushed a lot in Saturday, too. But it was a great show. I think everybody there really enjoyed the show. There, there were some logistical things with transportation, but that can be expected because of just the volume of people and the fact that, you know, the airport only has a certain amount of access to get in there. But all in all, even though some people weren't happy with that, they were really happy with the show itself. And, and thanks for, for all you do and all you did for this. And Ryan already mentioned the graduation for City Academy. It, Citizens Academy's been a big, big success. There have been a lot of people go through that, and, and they're all very complimentary. They've had various suggestions we've instituted to kind of make some minor changes. And thanks to Nicolette and her staff, Jessica, they all do a wonderful job putting this on. And it's, it's really enlightened a lot of people's lives, and it's, it's showed them, you know, it's appropriate. Tonight was Public Works Week, and people just don't realize what goes into that, that whole area. It's big. This last week, we had a Simpo Board meeting and, and approved the annual plan for, for Simpo. This afternoon, it was down at the corner of Broadway and Sprig to dedicate a new sculpture there by Broadway Pharmacy. This is the fifth such sculpture that's there. That particular business has, has really stepped up. And what they do is pay for the materials for the student to do the sculpture, and then they display it there for a year. If you've not driven by and seen the one that's there now, it is, it'll catch your eye. I mean, it's, it'll make you think. It's, it's something else. It's really neat, like all the sculptures are. But this one just, boom, it's there. So with that, we'll go to staff.
I think you covered most everything. I did want to let, you know, counsel, next meeting, July 3rd, after the council meeting, we're gonna have a Capitol Ball Field, I didn't say June 3rd, June 3rd. Next meeting at 7:00, we're gonna have the Capitol Hall Ball Field ribbon cutting. And so as soon as we're through here, we'll go there, so they can delay it if we need to. Hopefully, we'll get there in plenty of time to take a little tour before the ribbon cutting. So you see all that coming together, a lot of parties coming together to make that happen. And so it's something to put on your calendar for next meeting. Been a lot of work going on. Mentioned most, all of it. And staff just extremely busy with the air show, with cleaning up downtown and the parks and public works. Running those pumps for six weeks now, something like that?
Seventy days, six weeks.
Seventy days, seventy days. That's, and if it stops for, I used to know, it was like 15 minutes downtown floods.
Oh, and we had a, a pump didn't work, downtown did flood 15 minutes.
So this is how critical that is, and they're, they're on the watch. And for 70 consecutive days, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for every second of it, thank you. That's just exemplifies what staff does in many cases, 24/7, so. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Items for discussion this evening, the first thing is the planning and zoning report. Looks like we have Bruce Skinner here tonight.
Good evening. Mr. Glenn has school board this evening, so.
Good to see you recovered from your rappel down the...
It was, yes. There wasn't much to recover from. It was all very... The recovery in my house is actually because two of my family members were volunteers at the air show, and they are red, like my shirt red, so.
Sunscreen.
Yes, well, lesson learned. We had seven items on our May 8th Planning and Zoning Commission. Five of them are commissioned, five of them were pretty standard. I'm gonna touch on those. And then the two items where there's a little more discussion. The first one was a rezoning from medium density multifamily to central business district. This is the Eden Spa. It needed to be rezoned, so it was consistent with how that business had operated for many years. That passed eight to zero in favor of it. There were then four, and I'm gonna group all these together, subdivision plats that came before the commission. All four were approved, although only one of them is on your agenda for this evening. That's the Jones Dunklin plat. The other three had minor revisions and corrections that were needed. All passed without any opposition. Mr. Doughty abstained from one because he knew the subdivision, the plat owner. So those were, those five items, again, no concern voiced by anyone. The two items that were discussion among the P and Z, one was one that I'm very pleased to see the staff brought forward that was approved unanimously, amends the fence requirement for front yards and side yards. So if you have a corner lot and you want to put a privacy fence around your lot, where, what is your front yard? If you have a through lot, which there's a lot of those by where I live, this creates a secondary front yard in effect, which would allow someone to have a fence or a privacy fence on what would otherwise have been an area where maybe they wouldn't have in the past. And so, again, this passed unanimously. That is also on your agenda for tonight. And then the item that had the most discussion was the issue related to Amendment Two, which was medical marijuana. And so there was discussion on a number of items, how that would ultimately be recognized under zoning, hours of service, where a dispensary could be located, where a cultivation facility could be located, where a transportation facility could be located. I mean, in the end, the commission decided to stick with what the citizens of Missouri voted for, specifically as it related to the 1,000-foot buffer. I know Ryan has some, we have some maps and things that can get into that. But what the commission were, was really accepted, the staff's recommendation, that we define specific zones where a dispensary or a cultivation facility could be identified rather than having people request that. And then the second one, well, issue really was making sure that we debated the buffer. So whether it be 1,000 feet, some cities have looked at 500 feet. I read something online about a city that's looking at a 200-foot buffer. But again, what the citizens of Missouri passed was 1,000-foot buffer. And so the commission was supportive of staff's recommendation of the 1,000-foot buffer. Ryan is here to help me go through any of the details we want to on Amendment Two, timeline and all those items.
Got any questions?
Oh, is this just now time for open discussion about this?
Yes.
Okay. You know, the tough thing that I have, especially with these thousand-foot buffers, is essentially what it seems like is because population density was, people enjoyed walking from their home to their school to their church back in the early 1900s, when a lot of our housing stock was built, having a 1,000-foot buffer will essentially remove the ability for any of these businesses to be located anywhere outside of the highway corridor. And we're essentially, 1,000-foot buffer is gonna take it out of downtown, it's gonna take it out of essentially even the William Street and King's Highway. So it, it just really erases all chance of, of putting even a dispensary somewhere in a historic property that's, you know, maybe owned by a smaller landowner.
Do we have the map that shows C1?
We have IS, IS staff to put together some maps for us. With the 500 and 1,000 for dispensaries and for non-dis dispensary facilities, which would be the manufacturing and whatnot.
For everybody in the crowd, it's essentially, the 1,000-foot buffer essentially takes away any opportunity for this type of a business to be anywhere outside of right alongside Highway 55. And a handful of other places.
Am I, maybe I'm reading the map wrong. You're looking at the 1,000-foot, it would be allowed in all of the red, pink and tan, correct?
Yeah.
Correct.
Well, there's a number of those along King's Highway.
Yeah.
I mean, a large bit of space, actually. And then north, and then a few little pockets down Broadway, it looks like.
I would say, though, I think we have an opportunity to, if you're looking at 500 versus 1,000, and then maybe even do an overlay like in some of the other communities that, that we've looked at, that you have an opportunity, I don't know, Broadway Corridor, it comes to mind. If you look at 1,000 foot, but then if you look at 500 feet, there are some spots along Broadway, which actually could use some help as far as development and maybe not a vape shop, not a, not to knock on vape shop, sorry. There are a lot of other opportunities along Broadway Corridor with some of the rundown buildings that if we really took a look at and said, "Well, what if it was 500 feet?" And oh, by the way, what if you really dug into a Broadway to William Street and Sprig Street type corridor? I don't know. It just seems like 1,000 feet, we're putting them out here in, in some areas that from a development standpoint, don't seem very beneficial. I mean...
I know there are some, there are some communities that went inside the 1,000 feet because they wouldn't fit anywhere in their community at all, because they're small.
Well, we're, we're buttoning right up, up to that.
And we're close.
You guys, that's, that's an exaggeration, if I'm, if I'm reading this map correctly.
Well, being like, we can't fit a little dispensary out by like Sears Grand, you know, like that's, like, you know, they're not gonna be that large of an operation. And so I'm assuming they'll need sort of smaller square footage type of, of an outlet.
Well, there's plenty of small shops right across from Sears Grand, and, you know, there's several strip malls out there, across, by, you know, right in front of Walmart.
Yeah, like by Sugar Fire and stuff.
Right.
I just, you know, Rala, I think, put forth 500 feet, Creve Court, 300 feet, St. Joe, 300 feet. So a lot of other cities are kind of adapting to this and, and not welcoming it, but at least not throwing up a hindrance to it. And I, I really think that, in my mind, I think of everything in jobs, and I, I want these jobs. I want the dispensary jobs. I want the manufacturing jobs. I want the grow operation jobs. I want those all to be here in Cape, because I'm selfish, and I just want those jobs here for, for our people. And so I want us to be on the cutting edge of this, and I don't want us to have to be on the reactive edge. After every other city has gone to 300 feet, I don't want us to be the last one into the pool.
And there are tax dollars. There are serious tax dollars that are gonna be coming into the state. And I don't, I'm not even so sure of impeding on the 1,000-foot, if you've got a district that you're willing to take a look at. I mean, I, I would, I would really like to see what, what it really looks like along the Broadway Corridor outside of, I mean, I'm looking at the 500-foot map, but I would really like to see if there, what kind of overlays there would be from a, you know, a six-block section in downtown. I don't know. Yeah, you know.
Yeah. I just don't think, you know, just because it's a historic property, you know, it's historic properties, it's older, older parts of the city, doesn't mean that we can exclude this type of a business from there. Just because, you know, back in the early 1900s, that was the way of life. There was, you know, foot traffic way of life. People walked and went to their schools and their churches. I, I just think that just because that's where our housing and our building stock is, I think we have to adapt to make sure that we're, we're at least being progressive with the zoning for this.
Well, would you advocate, you know, putting liquor shops on, in these areas also? Because that's...
And some of them, there already are.
Yeah.
Well, sure. But I mean, that's, that's what, I mean, it's kind of along the same line.
They have a much smaller buffer zone.
Yeah. What is the buffer zone for a liquor?
Well, I'm just saying, uh...
Well, that, 200 feet? We're looking at downtown, like I'm looking at downtown.
It'd be interesting to talk to the downtown, to the, to the old Cape folks. We have a, we have a, you know, a wine shop downtown.
Yeah.
But that's different than... Oh, they're, they're on every corner, convenience stores.
We have about four businesses, 200 feet.
Yes.
And so like, you know, they sell cigarettes and liquor all over the place.
Right.
Sorry, Bruce.
That's okay. I knew it was eventually we'd join them.
You let him die out there alone, no?
Yeah, no, it's a 200-foot distance from a church or school for a liquor store.
Right.
We did talk with Old Town Cape about this before we took a planning zoning commission, and they recommended the 1,000-foot. We did show them, you know, the 500-foot for Marla, preferred 1,000-foot. So fortunately, I probably should have invited her, asked her to come tonight to participate in this discussion. But she would probably have some more comments to share with you.
Well, this is, this is a very preliminary conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would definitely want to hear what the downtown merchants, what Old Town Cape says, not just Marla's opinion, and kind of get a broader, a broader spectrum of what they all think.
Are you, as far as the non-dis dispensary facilities, is that kind of confirming, is that 1,000 feet, okay with that, or?
Well, the difference between 1,000 feet and 500 feet there really is...
Very small.
Yeah.
Not much.
What was that?
Did they add the property in the Red Star District?
Well, and that's also underwater right now. So I don't think we're gonna build a grow operation under 12 feet of water.
It's really good soil every five years.
Yeah.
So I'm just, I, I, that's what I'm hearing anyway from the council, is that, that the non-dis dispensary, your discussion is more about the dispensaries.
I mean, to me, to me it is. I...
I just want it for the jobs. Like I just, we've got to keep our eye on future growth and future areas for business, business and industry. And, and I really think we've got to make sure that we're proactive on this and not reactive, because I just don't want us to be a city in this, the city of the state that shuts it out. And then in 20 years, we've lost out on tax revenue from it. We've lost out on job opportunities from it. I mean, we've got to be proactive on this and not react.
We all know our sales tax problem where we're at. And there's definitely, there is going to be money that's going to be coming in on this. There's definitely sales tax dollars in it. And so this is being more proactive.
That's only from the dispensaries.
Correct.
I don't know that proactive is the right adjective. I think, I think you're being, I think maybe the right adjective is just allowing more, or more space for, I mean, how, how is it being reactive to...
Well, I just don't want us to be the last city to like, to, to welcome.
To what?
Is if at 1,000 feet, we're essentially locking everybody out except for the highway corridor?
That's not true, though, if you look at the map.
Well, I mean, there's, that's a little bit of hyperbole. You're right. But, you know, there's, there's a lot more restrictions on 1,000 feet. And if a place like Rala is going to 500 feet, I feel like we, we need to stay competitive. And they're in our congressional districts. They're the second largest city in our congressional district. And so we need to stay competitive whenever it comes to our competing cities.
I don't think you're gonna see a huge, huge number of dispensaries pop up for one reason. Number one, it's expensive to apply. Number two, it's expensive because they have an annual fee they have to play the state. So not, not everybody's just gonna say, "Well, I'm gonna open, I'm gonna open a dispensary." It takes a lot of financial backing and a lot of wherewithal to get it done.
Can someone remind me, how many are allowed per congressional district?
I think it's 24.
That's in the eighth federal congressional district. That's a big district. That goes all the way over...
West Plains.
Yeah.
All the way down south to Springfield, Stone County, Tannehill County.
So I just, I just think, you know, we need to think about this not from the short term and not from what our feelings are about marijuana. We need to think about it as what is gonna help with sales tax, driving revenue? How is it going to be, you know, in the next five or 10 years? And how can we make sure that we're on the, the leading edge of this and not on the reactive edge? Because if other cities in the state accommodate and they allow, you know, kind of open their arms to the...
Or within our district.
Yeah, other cities within our district.
I mean, I, I'm sorry, if we're, I mean, the cat's out of the bag at this point. So we're either going to say, we're either gonna say we, we would like those tax dollars and, and to accommodate to a certain level, or we push them out, we let them go to Jackson, Perryville, Popper Bluff, Sykeson.
There's really not a lot of difference in 1,000 and 500. 500 allows...
There's more, as far as dispensaries, it looked like there was some space downtown.
More on Broadway and some downtown.
It really opens up the...
I think if you go to 500 foot on the dispensaries, it opens up Fountain Street, a little more by the River Campus. That entire corridor, I think, becomes open.
It looked like there was some peace between Independence and William there.
Yeah.
And downtown, there were some big...
A lot more between West End and Pacific.
Well, it looks like there's more on North King's Highway as well.
Yeah.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I just, I don't think it's fair to say that, to say that, I think everyone here appreciates tax dollars. That doesn't mean we have to say we appreciate pot shops all over town.
That's not what it's, it's not worth saying.
No, that's what you're...
It would really be giving the property owners a fair shot.
No, you're advocating for more areas in town.
It'd be giving more property owners a fair shot at this business, you know? Because then we can have property, you know, these smaller property owners that might only own one or two commercial properties. You know, because then we can have property, you know, these smaller property owners that might only own one or two commercial properties and they could have it at their storefront. It would be, you know, beneficial to somebody.
It's not like we're saying 200 feet.
Yeah.
It's not even saying like we're looking at, at, at doing anything else with the other stuff.
And keep in mind that the state has some very extensive security regulations for all these facilities. So even for a dispensary, they're not allowed to display product in the storefront. They have to go into a room where they get screened and verified before they can go into the actual room where the dispensing takes place.
It's, it's very specific.
Yeah.
And it's very strict.
Very strict security measures, both physical and in terms of surveillance.
Well, I, I, I think we need to definitely plan for in the near future, this being a recreational marijuana facility. You know, every, every, instead of a medical dispensary. Because I think very soon that will happen.
I wonder what, how do they, I don't know what the plan would be if they convert dispensaries to, I don't know what that, what that process is. If it just goes to full recreational.
Well, I mean, the product is the same. So I would suspect overnight, it becomes non-medical.
I think there are two different licenses.
Yeah.
Sure, there'll be some paperwork.
So you're going to see one more than the other, obviously.
Um, it just, to me, it's, it, it says a lot that staff, planning zoning, the voters of Missouri have all agreed to 1,000 feet.
Well, we're going to set the tone because we're the largest city in our congressional district.
That's right.
And so this conversation now is going to cue off other conversations in Sykesville and Jackson and Perryville and other places. And so, you know, just, it'll be interesting to see where others go and, and whether or not these other places decide to make accommodations to welcome the business. And so I kind of just think it'll be interesting to see over the next couple of months where this conversation leads.
It's a good segue. Uh, the next steps in our process are, Brian?
Preparing ordinance. I was, I was tasked with the zoning portion of it. So we're, we're looking primarily at chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances. Um, and that's what this exercise was designed for, you know, taking the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine what type, which districts each of these facilities should be allowed. Uh, other regulations, time, place, and energy restrictions, like distance from a, a school, daycare, church, hours of operation. Uh, there's also the personal cultivation aspect, uh, which is also heavily regulated. Um, but that is recommended to be explicitly permitted in all zoning districts through the outside legal counsel.
And so, so the input that you've gotten from planning zoning and the input you have tonight, then you're going to go over the ordinance that will go to the.
When you're ready, yes, we can prepare an ordinance and then it's at your pleasure. We can bring it back to you first. We could take it to Planning and Zoning Commission for recommendation, then bring it to you. So whatever you prefer.
I'd like to see a map and maybe some, you know, with an overlay on top of each other with 1,000 and 500 on dispensaries. And also like how much acreage or how many parcels from 1,000 to 500 and what the real difference is.
I almost thought I was looking at that map.
I'd really like that information.
Superimposed on each?
Yes, that's what I mean. Because I mean, I, I'd like a little bit more information before we could say get an ordinance together and.
Was your, uh, planning zoning meeting, Bruce, was this a, a part of a, a public hearing? Were there, uh, citizens there making comments on this?
No, there was no input from citizens, just among commissioners.
I would say, uh, at our next meeting, maybe get that information before the next meeting. Because I'd like to say that, that, uh, the next P and Z meeting in June, you could give them some direction. Or at least an idea.
We've got time, I mean, the applications aren't even going to be.
They're due August 3rd.
Well, they're due August 3rd.
But the applications have, the applications have to have the address and apply and have to be legal with the city zoning.
I got you.
But we have to have that, they were suggesting.
The applicants want a comfort level that the site they've selected is going to comply with the local regulations.
So they really want to make sure that we've had whatever we were going to do by then.
Uh, this, this second meeting in June, uh, ideally, I'd like to see P and Z come back with, with a resolution for us, then we have July to get, to get it through before August.
Can I just throw in one other thought? Um, I don't know if anybody has any thoughts about this, but, um, we talked about it during the retreat. Uh, you know, Central High School is very close to some of these areas that, especially for the, the non-dispensory facilities. Um, I, I know the 1,000 foot, you know, 500 foot, whatever discussions out there. But I'd be very concerned about, um, you know, being at the outside at a football game or, you know, whatever, uh, baseball game out, out there and having one of these facilities within, you know, eyesight.
Can't be within 1,000 feet.
Well, I, I know, but, but there's a lot.
Even the manufacturing facility that the, the security is so.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about visually. You, you're able to sit at, you know, in the stands at a football game and see a good, a good way. And I, I'm curious about how.
I don't think from sitting at the stands, you're going to see.
Show the high school.
A lot of those.
And show Notre Dame too, just kind of both.
It's, uh, kind of the, yeah. Right at the intersection, it's not in. Yeah, that's right.
Even with glasses on, I can't decipher exactly what the street names are on that thing.
It's at that crossroads in between I-55 and, uh,
Should be right in here.
King's Highway.
It's way, it's way down there. I mean, away from the manufacturing.
My point is, um,
Yeah.
I'd like some thought and further discussion about. You're going to be able to.
A big building.
Uh, you call it a PR issue, call it a perception issue, I, I, I'm, I'm personally not happy with the thought of.
I'm looking at dispensaries.
Being on central campus and seeing, even though maybe they're 3,000 feet away, seeing these facilities advertising and, and whatnot. Maybe that's just me, but, um.
I don't think there's any, any manufacturing, non-dispensory facilities you could ever see.
There's one very close to that intersection down even within 1,000 feet.
You're looking, are you looking at this one? This is the non-dispensary.
I'm looking at this one.
Okay, you're looking at the dispensary then, not, not the non-dispensary.
This is 1,000.
1,000 or 500, it doesn't change. It doesn't change much.
No.
Well, that's a dispensary.
Right. Well, that's it. There's, excuse me. There's, you know, right here.
As far as Central High School, it doesn't change at all from 1,000 to 500. It's exactly the same down there.
Bob, that's not, that's not my point. My, my, my point is, I'm just wondering. I, 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 maybe I'm alone, but I suspect I'm not. And so it's just a thought I'm I'm throwing out there. So.
Okay.
And I, it's just something I'm asking to talk about as this progresses.
Or the, uh.
Or any school for that matter.
With planning and zoning. They will have a public hearing.
Yes, there would end up being a public hearing eventually. So I would say if.
And then a vote that same night.
Then there would be a second public hearing here.
Is there a second?
We would take it, let's say we were to take an ordinance, the draft ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their next meeting in June. They would vote on that. We would then have to advertise for the council's public hearing. So that meeting would not be able to be held until the first meeting in July.
Right.
And then you're looking at second and third, end of July. The ordinance would take effect, if approved, right before the deadline.
And we're running on a pretty tight deadline. So we got some information to assimilate.
That's if we prepared an ordinance for the next P and Z.
Right.
Back for discussion. That's going to extend that timeline.
I mean, I'm just trying to comply with the August 3rd deadline. Uh, there are a lot of communities that have done this already. Jackson's already headed to P and Z and it's back to their council. Uh, we're just running a little behind, so.
The data side.
Uh, 1,000 feet, I think.
You're looking for a ordinance to go to P and Z. You're looking for direction for 500 or 1,000 feet, I assume.
For all of it, yeah, I mean, we had the certain zoning districts we identified and, and other parameters like hours of operation. Uh, staff and the commission both recommended for dispensaries only, uh, hours of 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM and no restriction on the other facilities.
Is this, uh, is all by right or special use?
Staff recommended by right and the commission went along with that.
That's another.
7:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
An overlay is an option, uh, special use permit is an option, is an option, but that is not recommended by our outside legal counsel or by Mr. Cunningham.
Can you explain that just a moment briefly? What, what you're.
Special use permit or?
Yeah, I mean, what, how that would apply here.
So for a special use permit, uh, the applicant has to propose all the details about the proposed use and development. Uh, that goes through Planning and Zoning Commission, much like a rezoning. It's then presented to the council and then the council votes on that. If it's approved, then that permit is issued and there is the ability to impose conditions on that. Uh, with an overlay, uh, it is, it is a zoning action. It's, it's a matter of adding the overlay to a property that already has a base zoning. So that would also go through Planning and Zoning Commission and Council. But Eric could probably describe to you, you know, kind of what some of the differences are.
What, and why, why would you not recommend that?
First, I guess the, uh, the most obvious thing is the fact that there is a discretionary aspect to it. Second, for the, for, for the point of, of the standard of review on an appeal. Uh, if it is a, an overlay district or a flat out use of right, then the, uh, then it's reviewed on a legislative basis. Uh, and the issue in front of the Court of Appeals is whether the decision was arbitrary and capricious. Is there a reasonable basis for it? And that's going to be very easily upheld on appeal. The, uh, if it's a special use permit, um, on top of the discretionary aspect, the, uh, the court will look to see if there was competent and substantial evidence on the record as a whole to support the issue, the decision that was made. And that is significantly more difficult to uphold on appeal. And, uh, and because of the contention, uh, involved in this kind of a decision, uh, I had considered that to be something the city council would not want to do. Our outside council had considered that. That's what Planning and Zoning Commission had considered as well. Most people are staying away from the special use permit or conditional use prevent aspect of it because of the problems on, on upholding it on appeal.
And given that's a, a constitutional amendment, that seems to be fairly, you know, solid. Yeah, okay.
So I would say get overlay showing, uh, both of them on one map if we can.
I'm just wanting to see the additional properties in a single color to show what, what additional properties would be eligible. It went down to 500.
Yeah, I mean.
Mayor, Council, we can probably quantify the number of parcels with differing.
Yeah, we can give you numbers and acres and any of that.
I think I saw one online where it showed how many acres of each one.
Yeah, we could provide that information.
That way you could just kind of see.
But that way you could get some more input the next meeting and, and let them then come up with an ordinance the third meeting in June. And we'll get it back for a public hearing in July.
And can you, I'm sorry, can you just remind me, non-dispensory facilities, they include the, the growing facilities. Anything else?
Cultivation, uh, medical marijuana infused products, testing. And then transportation facility could be a standalone. It'll probably be incorporated with other ones, but there could be a, where it's simply stored and transported.
Gotcha.
So there's actually five categories.
Well, at this point, I'd like to say that, uh, I support what the owners of the state did, planning and zoning did, director of the Old Town Cape did, other communities, Jackson has done. I support the 1,000 foot. It's my opinion going forward.
I would say bring back whatever information, if there's other information that, that you'd like to see, the council person would like to see, uh, let Scott know, we'll see if we can't get that assimilated before the next meeting. Okay? Thank you all. Sorry, we kept us along, Bruce. Usually you guys are in here and out. Thank you. Are there any appearances regarding items not listed on the agenda this evening? Yes, sir.
Evening, Council. Uh, my name is Will Reimer. Uh, I live at 1118 Dorothy Drive. Uh, I've addressed you all several times before. I'm back a third time. Uh, some of you probably can guess why I'm here. I was, I was alerted today to the fact that the, the building that we used to, my father and I had built our business in over the course of the past decade that housed Reimers on the Plaza is being demolished in the morning at 8:00 AM. For the past year, I've, I've asked, I've pleaded, I've tried to find clarity in this whole situation that's solved to the, the decline of our business, not just the decline, but the, the closure. Uh, we operated for nine years. It was turned into a CID, the entire 10 acre parcel was. We were never relocated as per the redevelopment plan that this council adopted. None of that happened. We weren't given an offer. We were not, uh, nothing occurred, period. We were sued as a matter of fact. Sued for back rent, $9,000. Eight month long eviction process, eight months. I was under the impression evictions were a quick thing. That eviction process that took eight months, I didn't know $9,000. Matter of fact, I didn't know a penny. I paid all my rent. But heck, eight months, by the time eight months went along, what's left of my business that couldn't license reopen? By the way, I did pay my city license fee, $750, never got that license. I continue to ask. How's this occurred? How, how am I, the rest of my property that's still located inside that building? I guess it's going to be demolished in the morning. I still have access to the building. So I'm going to spend my evening trying to get what property I can out. There was a judgment entered for possession. The owner did not wait to, to enforce the judgment with a writ. He just locked me out of the building. By the time I was let back in, I've had to work as I could on the side to, to pay for a security, to a secure, or not a security, a storage unit to house my stuff in. The development plan passed by this council said no undue hardship will come to any of these businesses. Specifically, it says certain businesses currently located in the redevelopment area, including those located in the building proposed to be demolished, will need to be relocated to accommodate construction of this redevelopment project. These businesses have been given or will receive offers within the redevelopment area. Didn't happen. To the extent applicable, the relocation of any business will be conducted within accordance of Missouri state law. Didn't happen. Guys, I'm begging you. I'm begging at this point for anything at all you can do. You issue license, you issue liquor licenses. There are two within this community improvement district. Those are up for renewal. You, you issue, you, it was in the newspaper where you, you spoke about a stop because of the other town plaza, community improvement district for potholes and this and that. So don't, you can't tell me that, you cannot say anything or do anything to impact them. This is a city, signed off on development plan. We issue licenses to this community improvement district. I know that now they do operate outside of the complete guidelines of the city. Guys, they've ruined my family. This CID put me out of business. I have been, I had a clean, clean personal record. I'm being probably evicted from my home this week. Cause I couldn't take on another job because I had to fight a legal battle that I kept waiting on relocation assistance that was going to be coming. It was coming, I was told. Didn't happen. I'm done now, like I will be filing bankruptcy soon. I'm, I have a great landlord that has worked with me because he understood how bad this has been for my family. But, I mean, he has bills too. Whether it's stopping a license, whether it's anything within y'all's grasp that you could do, within your district to do, that could solve any of these problems or help my family in any way. I'm begging you, please. Look outside the sales tax aspect of this thing and see what it's done to my nine year business. Thank you.
Anybody else? For appearances for an item not on the agenda? My comment is it's a private matter between between him and his, the person who bought the property. The city has no, no control over what happens.
The city's listed on the assessment we decided is now.
The city's listed on the assessment report side as now ready.
I mean, the city approved the CID, but we don't own the property.
I also spoke to the county city, it was approved. It was delayed. Matter of fact, I was told by Mayor Reddick, there was plenty of time here to be moved.
Well, I understand you were offered a number of places to move to, and you didn't want to move there.
No. Tell me, one of those places that I was offered? I failed to get that offer.
The old Buffalo Wildwing space.
I'm sorry.
The old Buffalo Wildwing.
The old Buffalo Wildwing space. I was never offered that. I spoke to Bill Zellmer. I worked for Bill Zellmer. He came over, he said, "Will, I understand that this is well beyond your square footage and your rent." It wasn't even comparable. I was looking at going from a $2,100 rent for something I'd invested in over time that I still had a valid lease to, to $8,000. I'm sorry, what's it listed at? Maybe $7,000 rent now is what it's listed at, whenever Rosati's...
There were no other, no other options offered at all?
I was offered 1749 Y Independence, which was leased at the time. It was going to require a $28,000 investment of a sprinkler system to bring it to code, and the rent still would have been considerably higher than what I was paying. There was nothing I was offered in the ballpark. I tried to obtain 52 Plaza Way. It now houses a liquor store. That's community improvement, liquor store. I was told that was not going to be working, it wouldn't be working out for me. And then I was specifically told, by that point in time, I had angered the owner, and I would not be allowed on his property. So he demolishes my building 8:00 a.m. in the morning, that still houses my property.
Well, I understand you've had chances to get your property out of there.
I have been getting my property out of there. I no longer have the means by which that I had a year ago in my business to function. I've had to work alongside, then come in at night with what I could put together and by myself move my property. Of 10 years that we built there, 5,200 square foot, I'm having to tear it all out. The addition we put in the back that we put through filing and we did proper way, tearing it all out, it doesn't even, it doesn't affect him at all, but it has ruined my family.
Any other comments? Anybody else? If not, we're going to agenda review.
We have a regular agenda tonight, consent agenda, first nine items are the minutes, and then second and third readings from the thing from last time. Number 10 is received by annexation petition, so we, these are property owners that presented the annexation petition, so acknowledges that and starts that process. Number 11 will be a performance guarantee agreement with Collins Mill Development. 12 is an application with Missouri Department of Economic Development regarding the community facility grant for the Community Caring Council and those grant documents, so that's authorizing that to move forward. And then 13 is the approval of partial release of performance guarantee contract for Deerfield, and then 14, 15, and 16 are accepting public improvements. Any questions on consent agenda? Any of those items you'd like to remove or make known in your vote? Not, new ordinances. Number 17 is permanent sewer easement for Deerfield. 18 is appropriation funds for grant-funded expenditures, so as we prepare the budget, we have certain items that anticipate being grant-funded, and this appropriates the funds for that from previous year for the year ending June 30. And then 19 is special tax bill for some condemned properties that we took down on Long Sprig Street. 20, Mr. Skinner already talked about the change of fences. This is a good change, make things more streamlined. 21 is temporary construction easement on North Kings Highway for the Hopper Road Box Culvert project. 22 is general warranty deed for property located on North Water Street. 23 will be permanent drainage easement on Hopper Road. 24 is a record plat for Jones Duncan. Mr. Skinner already talked about that one. And 25 is a record plat for Collins Mill subdivision Phase 3, that continues to move along. And then 26 is the permanent sanitary sewer and utility easements for Kensington Place. Question on any of those items? Also have three appointments tonight, I believe, Board of Appeals, Historic Preservation, and then the Transportation Trust Fund Committee appointments. Mayor?
We'll now go into regular session, and I'll have the call to order and roll call.
Mr. Essex?
Here.
Dr. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Guard?
Here.
Ms. Kinder?
Here.
There's more? That's it. Mr. Presson?
Here.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. Motion on Mr. Guard, second by Mr. Presson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there anybody here this evening to appear before the council for an item on the agenda this evening? If not, we'll move into the consent agenda.
Bill number 19-53, an ordinance accepting two permanent sewer and utility easements from Jury Properties Inc. for estates Phase 2 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting two permanent sewer and utility easements from Jury Properties Inc. for Deerfield Estates Phase 2 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 19-54, an ordinance accepting four permanent sewer and utility easements for Kensington Place Phase 1 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance accepting four permanent sewer and utility easements for Kensington Place Phase 1 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 19-67, an ordinance meaning Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing zoning property located at 3269 Hopper Road in the city in Canton, Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R1 to C1. An ordinance meaning Chapter 30 of the Code of Ordinances, the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri, by changing the zoning of property located at 3269 Hopper Road in the city in Canton, Cape Girardeau, Missouri, from R1 to C1. Bill number 19-68, an ordinance proving the record plat of 1704 David subdivision. An ordinance proving the record plat of 1704 David subdivision. Bill number 19-69, an ordinance proving the record plat of C and T Side subdivision. An ordinance proving the record plat of C and T Side subdivision. Bill number 19-70, an ordinance proving the plat of right-of-way dedication for an extension of Walnut Street. An ordinance proving the plat of right-of-way dedication for an extension of Walnut Street. Bill number 19-72, an ordinance proving the record plat of the Estates at Hopper Crossing. An ordinance proving the record plat of the Estates at Hopper Crossing. Bill number 19-73, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Rhodes Properties LLC for property along Southern Expressway right-of-way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a special warranty deed to Rhodes Properties LLC for property along Southern Expressway right-of-way in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 19-76, resolution acknowledging receipt of annexation petition from various property hunters and setting up public caring regarding the proposed annexations. Bill number 19-79, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute a performance guarantee agreeing with Collins Mill Development Group LLC for Collins Mill subdivision Phase 3 in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Bill number 19-85, a resolution authorizing city manager to execute an application to the Missouri Department of Economic Development under the 2019 Community Facility Grant on behalf of the Community Caring Council and to execute all necessary grant documents.
You have before you the consent agenda? I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Stacy, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. New ordinances. Bill number 19-65, an ordinance accepting four permanent sanitary sewer easements for Deerfield Offsite from Jury Southwest Incorporated in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Mr. Guard, second by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-75, an ordinance appropriating funds for certain grant-funded expenditures for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2019. Motion by Robbie, second by Dan. Any discussion? Might add, there are eight grants here that were not in the 1819 budget, totaling about $547,000, so grants are a good thing.
I think our cost is like $67,000.
You said they weren't in last year's budget.
A lot, there are a lot of grants you apply for that may not initially be in the budget, but the money comes in that year, so we have to appropriate the funds for those.
But they were expected to come in. These weren't things that just kind of happened.
Well, you don't know. Sometimes you apply for a grant...
I mean, you get the emergency solutions grant every year.
Right. But something you get every year.
Sometimes more like the amount of emergency grants more likely stick in our budget.
Okay.
Very similar, yeah. So it's kind of a, we're just making sure we're transparent about everything.
Right. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-77, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of a special tax bill for properties located at 2827 and 2829 South Sprig Street for the demolition of dangerous buildings under the provisions of Chapter 7 of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Second.
Motion by Dan, second by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-78, an ordinance meaning Chapter 25 of the Secrata Ordinances of the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri regarding fences. Motion by Robbie.
Second.
Second by Ryan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-80, an ordinance accepting a temporary construction easement from DLG LLC for 1,001 North Kings Highway for the Hopper Road Box Culvert project in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Second.
Dan, second by Stacy. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote.
Okay, that's on 19-80? Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. Bill number 19-81, an ordinance accepting a general warranty deed for property located at 1237 Rear North Water Street in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri. Motion by Dan.
Second.
Second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill number 19-82, an ordinance accepting a permanent drainage easement from DeJoy's of Shoney's Incorporated for 2640 Hopper Road in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-83, an ordinance approving the record plat of Jones Dunkland subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dan. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 19-84, an ordinance approving the record plat of Collins Mill subdivision.
So moved.
Motion by Ryan.
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion?
Mayor, please mark my vote. It's intentional conflict.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries with one abstention. Bill number 19-86, an ordinance accepting four permanent sanitary sewer and utility easements for Kensington Place Phase 1 from Jury Properties Incorporated and Jury Southwest Incorporated in the city of Cape Girardeau, Missouri.
Second.
Motion by Robbie, second by Ryan. Any discussion?
The captured jury here, looks like it's coming along pretty good.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Appointments to the Board of Appeals. It looks like Robert Blastine and Willie Sandin were appointed to the Board of Appeals. Appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission.
So moved on those appointments.
I'm just going to do them all at once.
Oh, okay.
It's okay. We'll just do them separately.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Could you repeat?
Who made the motion in the second?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
Dan made the second. All right, appointments to the Historic Preservation Commission. Looks like we have Lauren Clark, Ken Hendricks, and Ken Markin.
So moved.
Motion by Victor, second by Robbie. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Transportation Trust Fund Committee Appointments. Now, and those are Harry Rediger is the chair, John Boss, Jeff Glenn, Doug Spohler, Kevin Greaser, Bruce Skinner, Trey Bertrand, and Tamara Zellers-Buck. Motion by Dan. Second by Stacy. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion also carries. Any other business this evening?
Just to note, the revenue expense summaries are attached, and the delivery of the proposed budget has been posted on our website along with the Secrata, which is all those graphs that you saw before. All of that is now available with your input from the council retreat and along the way, so.
Okay.
All available to the public.
Boy, that didn't take long. Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?